Call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the September 1st, 2020 Post Falls City Council member, uh, meeting. Or member. A colloquial note that our council members are present. Under announcements, we just want to announce that the city hall and city business offices will be closed Monday, September 7th in observance of Labor Day, and I'm going to assume the police department will be open. Thank you. And also, under announcements, I'd like to congratulate His Honor Judge Cafferty. John was selected on Friday to fill one of the new magistrate's positions. And John, we appreciate everything you've done for us. You've been a tremendous help. We're going to miss you. And I did verify you do have to wear long pants under the robe. Just be sure that you do that. But congratulations. I'm sure you'll do a fine job. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
There are none tonight, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflicts, ex parte contacts, and site visits? Would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes, August 18th, 2020, city council meeting. Item B is payables, August 11th through August 24th, 2020. Item C is police department request to auction off two vehicles. And item D is the auditing contract with Anderson Brothers CPAs PA.
Shortest consent calendar we've had in a long time. Are there any questions? See, none of entertaining motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item up tonight is public hearings, and we have none, followed by unfinished business returning ordinances and resolutions. And there are a resolution and an ordinance, council president.
Move to pass the resolution fiscal year 2021 fee resolution update.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item up is an ordinance on fiscal year 2021 budget.
Move to place the ordinance fiscal year 2021 budget in the amount of $96,969,815 on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Motion second, further discussion.
Isn't there a change to that amount?
No, that's the changed amount.
The amount, I believe the amount was correct. Is that? Yes. The published amount was correct.
Yeah, that was.
Which was $96,587,162.
On the new ordinance, it says.
The amount is the $96,587,162.
Oh. Okay.
So the ordinance itself has been updated?
Yes.
So Linda, you, I can't remember the number. Did you read the old amount?
Yeah, I read the old amount.
Do we need to modify that motion?
I would modify that motion to $96,587,162 on its first and only reading while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. A point of order here. We had a motion to second, and I didn't ask, I just asked if there was a new one. Do we need to do anything with the first one?
It wasn't voted on.
No, we're fine.
Okay. I just, since we had the motion second, I wanted to make sure. Thank you, Linda. Uh, no further questions. Uh, roll call, please.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Wilson.
An ordinance entitled the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020, appropriating the sum of $96,587,162 to create the expenses and liabilities of the city of Post Falls for said fiscal year and establishing kinds and levels for established positions authorizing a levy of a sufficient tax upon the taxable property and specifying the objects and purposes for which appropriations are made.
Move to approve the ordinance fiscal year 2021 budget to direct to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next up is the follow-up on Public Safety, Public Safety Care Act funds. Is that you, Mr. Cafferty, or who's presenting on that?
So I can handle, I think, save it. Last council meeting, I know that John and Shelley talked to you about the status of the governor's program to earmark a certain portion of the CARES Act funding towards property tax relief. I think you have the memo in your packet again tonight. Nothing has changed. We've heard nothing new from the governor's office, from anyone else. So we're still in this situation where the governor has, we have a program that potentially could be used to offset some of the property tax dollars that, that the citizens of Post Falls pay. But the program as adopted by Congress doesn't allow for that type of use. The governor has said that he, and I believe him, he says he traveled to Washington DC and met with Secretary of the Treasury and administration officials, and they made positive noises about the program but wouldn't put in writing that it met the requirements of the, of the act. So we're left now trying to make a decision on whether or not to proceed based on guidance that, that the federal government won't put in writing. So that's, that's the issue before you. We need to make a final decision so we can fill in the, the forms that we send down to the, the state with the appropriate numbers.
My, I would love, I'm sorry, do you have something, Shelley, first?
I was just gonna add, I have a few updates on what other agencies have done. So to date, Burley has declined, and they base that upon not being compliant with the CARES Act. And also with the reduction in property taxes, it'll cause a spike in the following year. And they're concerned about the citizens' reaction to that spike in the following year. Lewiston has also declined for similar reasons. McCall did decide to take it. It was a four to one vote with McCall. Rathdrom chose to take their portion, and Sandpoint has chosen to take theirs. And the Cootney County Board of County Commissioners is doing a poll of citizens that are supposed to email them to let them know their feelings on whether or not they'd be willing to pay back the funds should the county be sued over this property tax initiative.
Thank you. When I look at CARES Act, you know, I think the intention has been very good. I think it's, I think the official term would be willy-nilly. Uh, when I look at the PPP loans, people whose businesses were doing well still qualified for it. Now we're in the forgiveness process, and I'm going to estimate the probably 90 to 100% of the people that took out these loans will have the amounts forgiven. I don't think it was properly, the whole CARES Act, I don't think it was properly administered. I would love to see tax relief for our citizens, but I also don't want to put the city, the council, or our citizens, back them into a corner if, in fact, it is determined down the road that this property tax relief as proposed by the governor is not legal. And I read through a lot of what Warren and John provided us, and believe me, there, I think council saw it, there was a ton of information. But on page five of the frequently asked questions, it said, "May funds, may fund payments be used to assist impacted property owners with the payment of their property taxes?" The answer, "Fund payments may not be used for government revenue replacing, replacement, including the provision of assistance to meet tax obligations." That, to me, I mean, that was a one-sentence question and a one-sentence answer. But that causes me concern, so I've said my piece. Counsel, who wants to comment? Carrie?
I would be disinclined to move forward. If, if no one is willing to put it in writing, you know, people making noise in Washington DC is lovely, but it happens all the time. But yeah, I, I would absolutely not be in favor of moving forward with it.
Al?
I feel the same way. Primarily because of the litigation that's out there, I'm concerned that we take the money now, we're gonna have to give it back later, and I don't, I don't think that's best for our citizens. I, I, I'm with you, Mayor. I read that same thing. It's like, that's pretty black and white to me. So I would lean toward what Carrie said and deny the money.
Joe?
Yeah, and not only would we possibly be in a position of having to pay it back, but paying it back with additional fees and penalties. So we could end up worse than we started, and the benefit really is, it's obviously not a one-to-one, but the citizens save some money on their property taxes, but they pay for it in their federal taxes. It's gotta come from somewhere. So it's gonna be kind of a flat wash anyway, so I'd rather be conservative on this one and keep ourselves out of trouble.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, I echo the, the thoughts of our other council members. I would like to see us, I wish it would have been stated somewhere, it could have been used for property tax relief, because I think the intentions could have been good, but I think there's just too many unanswered questions, and I, I think kind of what swayed me is with the lawsuit pending that we were talking about a little bit, that Bonner County is doing, it's just, you don't know what the results are gonna be from that, so.
Thank you. Steve? I'm sorry, Lynn?
I agree with what the other counselors have stated.
Same.
Thank you. We need a motion?
Yes, that's what's in action. I would need a motion to direct staff to either forego the CARES Act property tax relief or to accept it.
I move to forego the CARES Act property tax relief.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, counsel. It's, I know we all want to assist the taxpayers any way we can, but I hate to do it at a future risk if, if we're not certain what the answer will be, and if, in fact, we see documentation that say, that says what we, they're asking us to do is not legal, so. Appreciate your input. Next item up is Bay, Bay Street rehabilitation.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I am Ross Junkin, Maintenance Department Manager. And I'm here to present to you tonight. Should have brought my glasses. I apologize. All right. So I'm here to present this, the Bay Street Rehab Project that you've taken a look at a little bit already. The location of the project is, thank you. Location of the project is Bay Street between Seltice and Third Avenue. We identified, actually, my predecessors identified this as a site in need of asphalt restoration. With that comes ADA improvements that are mandated whenever we touch neighboring streets. So there are two ADA ramps on Seltice that would be updated as well as Third Avenue. We would also, if you look at the map, it's kind of hard to see, but at the third avenue on the east side of the road, there is a section of sidewalk that is missing. We would incorporate that and build new sidewalk to tie those together, as well as an ADA ramp that is missing there as well. You can see some pictures there of the existing conditions of the roadway. And there is a rail line that runs through that. So we'll have to stay back a little bit from them, work with them a little bit. The, we got five bids. We are approaching a window, a weather window as it closes. We're hoping to get this in and hoping to get some good, good bids in, and it looks like we did. The low bid was interstate concrete and asphalt at 155,000 and some change. The other bids, as you can see, were a couple of them below the engineer's estimate and a couple above. So we feel confident, and our consulting engineers feel confident in the low bid. So we would like to move forward and award this contract and get that underway. There's a 20-day working, working days, so we're anticipating it being a short contract. We did put a 5% contingency in there, so the total we're looking for is 163,192,000, or 102,165 cents. And we do have existing budget to cover those, more than cover this. So that's all I have tonight.
Nice to see it come, coming that far under engineer's estimate. For sure. So I appreciate that. Any questions?
This is the first of five identified locations that we're trying to get through to do some rehab on.
Okay. I didn't entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve the recommendation to award the Bay Street Rehabilitation to Interstate Concrete and Asphalt for a total of 163,192 dollars.
Second.
And 65 cents with a 5% contingency.
Second.
Motion second. Linda, people just keep jumping in front of you. They're not letting you finish.
What did I do wrong now?
No, you didn't do anything. No, we had, we had a second while you were halfway through the number again.
I seconded it before you got to 65 cents, so I didn't want to short the.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item up is the resolution for the 2020 Park and Recreation Master Plan.
I'd move to approve the 2020 Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business, and there's one action item, and that is to update the records retention schedule. Mr. Cafferty?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing me to appear today to discuss the update to the records retention schedule specific to the police department. So you probably have before you the list. It's on, I believe, page 12 where it shows. Basically, we're moving a couple of things. Instead of a three-year retention, it will be for a two-year retention for the audio and video data. To, as you can imagine, over the course of the last few years, the volume of data collected from videos has grown exponentially. What this is doing is reducing the amount of time where the city will be retaining those audio and video recordings, still within the statutory limit of two years, but to minimize the amount of storage needed to keep that data. Additionally, there's a modification to clarify the license plate reader data, which wasn't included in there, and specify the retention period for that. That's the extent of this change. And if you approve this, we'll bring it back to you at the next council meeting for a resolution.
So John, you've talked about how the two years falls within the statutory requirement?
Yes.
You ever run the risk, especially with PD and the body cams, of something coming up after that two-year period? Or is it, at that point, it's?
When it's gone, it's gone. Having said that, if, for example, it was one year and 364 days and a lawsuit got filed, we would stop. It would be retained for that purpose. The resolution makes clear, or will make clear when it comes before you, that to the extent there's any litigation pending or any matters that address or rely upon that data, it will be retained. There'll be what's called a litigation hold. We'll pause the destruction of that or the clearing of that data. Otherwise, short of something like that happening, we have kind of a rolling clearinghouse. So every, so often, we just clear them out to make room for more. Just like if any of you have businesses where you have video recording loops for, you know, outside cameras and stuff, they're on a much smaller loop than two years, but it's the same principle. We're gonna keep clearing it to save that space. Now, that's great, but, and will be doing that. But in today's world, we're always gathering more data. We're gonna, IT will be before you in the foreseeable future, I'm sure, because we need more space, we need more space, because there's always more and more and more. But this is an attempt to minimize the cost to the city and retain the information for as long as is necessary, but not longer than is necessary.
And that's my concern. I just hate to see something come, come back to us down the road, and for some reason, we need that body cam footage, and it's not there.
Right, and so that's.
Counsel comments? Al?
My only question, John, is if there was a video recording, are we locked into that two years? My question being is if there was something, a theft, a fire, something like that, and we said, you know what, this may come back? Can we hang on to that?
Yes, you can. If you have a need for it, this is just for storage purposes. So if there's a need, whether it be a pending lawsuit or some other reason, you say, you know, we may want this in the future, you can hold that back still. I'm good.
Joe?
In your experience, and I guess Warren can answer this too, how often does it come up that some footage that's, you know, greater than two years old needs to be brought back for a court case of some sort?
My guess is pretty rare, because most of the times, these are gonna be brought up in a criminal action, and those get first bite at the court system, and so typically, you're gonna be into court, you're gonna know which ones are gonna be litigated, and you're gonna have those segregated earlier, and it's not gonna be an issue. There's a potential that it could come up, but as long as you have a policy that says, this is our policy, and we're gonna follow it, you're protected against bad things coming out of that.
Civilly, it's probably more likely to something come up years later, right?
Yeah.
So civil cause of action is two years after it arises, so this falls within that. And to the extent that you have a civil matter that follows after a criminal matter, you would file that, they would be retained, you'd know that, so they would still be saved for those purposes.
So you guys are perfectly comfortable with the risk of hacking off that third year?
As much as lawyers are ever perfectly comfortable with anything, yes.
All right. Any other comments? So do we need motion to direct, bring it back?
Yeah, we would bring it back if, for final approval next council meeting.
Need a motion on that, or is that just?
No.
Good, thank you. Thanks, John. Next item is administrative staff reports, and it's CARES Act funds update.
Did anybody do that already?
And Jason is going to present that.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The last council meeting, we had, we amended the budget to include the funds that we had received for the CARES Act, and we have appropriated $747,000 for this year, and I wanted just to, to present to council the type of things that we have purchased. And in the council packet, you have seen that we have some of the big-ticket items. We have computer and computer equipment, fencing that too, that was used to guard off the playground equipment when it was deemed necessary. They also purchased a machine that would sanitize the playground equipment as well. That was fully reimbursed. And also, the city had made a decision to pay the credit card fees to limit the traffic we had in city hall. So we didn't know at the time, but the CARES Act money would reimburse the city for its costs. So so far, we've received $17,000 on those type of items. We have sent two reimbursements in, and we're working on a third. And these funds are the type of monies that we do need to spend by the end of December. So we still have some, we still have a ways to go, but we are working on things that we need for the, for COVID-related items.
And Jason is tracking all COVID-related items, whether they can be reimbursed from the CARES Act or not. So when you look at the report, it has all expenses, and then you'll see there's a revenue offsetting CARES Act. But there were some funds that were expended prior to the CARES Act being adopted on COVID that we did track. Some salary information and items like that, that we want to give you a full picture of at the end of this year and what COVID costs the city.
Right. We have some leave that, that people had taken for COVID-related, and we had also submitted that for reimbursement as well, and we'll see what happens with that.
Carrie?
So what is the, is it through 2020 that the city will pay those credit card fees?
Yeah, that's what we have anticipated to carry, to continue to pay those for, for the time being, yes. And then we'll make a decision on whether it reverts back to customer pay or keep, the city keep to pay, keep paying it.
And what kind of response have you had from the public on that?
It's, we've had a pretty.
Are they even aware?
Sometimes, no. I mean, because they're, they were used to paying the fee ahead of time, so when we've had. But we have noticed that we had, when we limited the traffic that was in, the credit card fees went up because people were paying online or with their phone, or just not coming by dropping off a check in the, in the box. They were trying to stay home and, and paid more online. We've noticed there's been roughly about 4,500 to 5,000 on credit card fees each month in, when people have paid. So the surprise was the COVID money that, from the CARES Act reimbursed the city for those, so that was a nice surprise.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Next item up on the agenda, citizens' issues. Shannon, do we have some? It's gonna be via Zoom, correct?
So am I setting the five-minute timer from here? Can she see it?
We'll have to let her know.
Lisa, can you unmute your computer?
Yes, ma'am. Here I am. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can, and what we'll do is we'll ask you to give us your name for the record, and you will have five minutes to speak, and we will notify you when there's 30 seconds left.
Okay, very good. Hello there. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Lisa Flanagan, and my husband and I are homeowners for a home in Post Falls. We own a duplex, and the reason why I'm reaching out to you today is I've been trying to resolve a problem that has to do with a sewage fee. I was notified by the Finance Department on May 14th. A letter was sent to me by Jody Meyer, the date of the letter, May 14th. I immediately called to find out what more detail concerning this matter. I had the pleasure of talking with Jody. I was able to talk to Jason. And through this discussion, what we learned is that there was an audit performed on several homes in the area or within the city, I'm not sure, and there was determined that they, the city had not charged a correct amount. When I originally called, I was told that my duplex that I owned had two meters and that I was only being charged for one meter, one service. And they gave me a table of, an amount that I would have to pay back. It was determined by the city that they felt that it was fair that I pay back two years, and they wanted to work with me and find out a way to resolve the matter. When I have called the city and spoken as well to John Cafferty, the conversations have been very positive and polite, but there is a disagreement that I have. And really, it comes down to the fact that at our property, located at 1623 Quarterlane Avenue, we only have one meter. There's no split. We have one water bill, and we have one meter to service for that sewer charge. What the city is proposing is that since we own a duplex, they believe that we should have to pay twice the amount and also pay back those tax, those tax fees. After further investigation and a lot of conversations with John Cafferty and I, there's a couple of sticking points that I just want to bring forward to the city council just to ask and further discuss this matter. I do want to say, though, that I have paid the bill. A shut-off notice was put on my home on July 28th. Despite being in constant communication and waiting to resolve this matter, on July 28th, a shut-off notice was put on the door. I contacted Jason's office to find out if that could be reversed, since I had no outstanding bills. I've been on auto pay since 2014. I owe no money, but there was this dispute without having a chance to resolve the matter with the city and no way of changing that. I had to pay the fee, and that amounted to $1,546.30. So the city has my money, and I believe that they have. I don't believe that that was the right decision to make. I felt that it was retaliatory, to be honest with you, to put a shut-off notice on a property for payments that have been received. This was in dispute, so I, I really was unhappy about how that was handled. So with that being said, John has provided us some codes and laws pertinent to the city of Post Falls, and one of the things that comes up is that any residence shall be calculated as a service unit minimum for water reclamation purposes unless evidence demonstrates substantially greater flows. Our property does not have an excessive use of water, which of course is tied to the sewer bill. It is a reasonable amount. Looking at our other properties that we own in the Quarterlane, the property, the cost of our water bill is very similar to what we see at our duplex, which has six bedrooms and three adults. With only one pipe, which is four inches, after confirming with the city engineer, he stated that all residential homes also have a four-inch pipe. I asked more questions as well. What service were we being given that would allow the city to essentially double our charge, moving us from 5690 to 11380? What additional things were happening to say, yes, that the ability should pay? For example, we do have two sets of trash cans, and we should be paying for two sets. I agree with that. That was a mistake, and we were not, so I'm happy to pay that second fee.
Lisa, 30 seconds remaining. Lisa, thirty seconds remaining.
But in, thank you, sir. But in the case of the sewer bill, there is no measure, which was confirmed by the city, and there is nothing showing on my water bill that my amount being used per month is excessive. The bottom line, council, is that there should be one charge for one pipe. There is no split off, there is no excessive use. I understand the differences between dwellings and multifamily, I understand all that language. But when we're looking at usage, our facility, our building does not overuse. And therefore, asking us to pay twice the amount per month for receiving a service that falls under a single-family home, I believe it's fraudulent. And to ask for us to go back two years and pay, as stated in the letter I received, there was a written contract, I've never signed a written contract with a city.
Time is up, so we cannot take action on anything tonight in public comment, but I know staff will update council on it, we'll go from there. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your time and I hope you guys stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon, anyone else?
So Mr. Cafferty has drafted a letter responding to the letter that was sent to us from Ms. Flanagan. And Shannon, was that, sorry, I don't know where Shannon went. Was that letter sent out to council? It was completed today?
Is that your dius?
So since we cannot take action tonight, you recommend everybody take it, read it and we put it on a future agenda.
Yes.
So that will be done. Next item, Mayor and Council comments. I want to make a comment. Several years ago, there was a fire over in Montrose. A fire moved down the fence from the first house, caught the second house on fire. The problem I had with it at that point was that people had parked on both sides of the street. Fire trucks couldn't get down the street. I mentioned that to the fire department, but they said that, you know, meets all their requirements. Well, last week, there was another fire. And the fire jumped from one house to the next house, destroyed both homes and melted the siding off a third house. When I was talking to the fireman who was on the scene the next morning, he said, "It's the prairie. Any breeze comes up, houses are so close together that you run that risk." I know we have building codes, I know we have setbacks, et cetera. I know we're not gonna change anything right now, but that's the second time in several years that I've seen one house fire lead to two house fires. And I truly believe that with the small setbacks we have, that that's a recipe for continued disaster. I see former Chief Lynn nodding, but the houses are so close together that it's, it's to be expected. And like I said, in this case, two houses destroyed and the siding actually melted off another house. So I'd just like the city to take that into, under advisement as we look at building codes, et cetera, with any changes that may be made in the future. So, that's it. Council comments? Carrie?
I've meant to bring this up before, so I made a note. I don't know if there's, it's not whether there's rhyme or reason, but I don't know why citizen comments are so far back.
They changed that several months ago for specific reasons.
Yeah, why, tell me, did I miss that meaning?
There is a rhyme or reason. So part of this is due to a change in how we do notices that, that went through the legislature a couple of years ago. The idea being that you can't take action on anything that's not listed as an action item. And if, and it's also, if it's not been noticed, you can't take action item. This way, we put it strategically at the bottom of the agenda so that it leads into a chance for us, if it's something that, that the council wants to consider, we can roll it over, take action on the next night without running the risk of having a large discussion during the middle of a council meeting when it hasn't been properly noticed. It's also put just before the Mayor and Council comments so that if, if a citizen brings up something that sparks your interest and you would like the count, or, excuse me, staff to address it and bring it back, that gives you a chance, it leads into the council comments, say, hey, that brings up a question, can you bring that back? So it gives you a chance to naturally transition and have a discussion and direct staff to address it.
Well, I, I don't know where I was.
Yeah, we had that discussion.
Was I here? Did you, did you see me? Did you see me in the seat?
You were here. You were here.
Alan says I was here.
Any other comments?
It's not like you would have big discussions because citizen comments are, you can make a comment, we don't interact. There's, there's not big discussions.
Part of it, it's, it's becoming, there's a trend toward this across the state because of the changes in how we do notifications. It's, it's kind of a best practices to move it towards the end. It lowers the temptation of having a full-blown discussion. We put it, or tried to put it strategically right in front of the Mayor and Council comments so that you have a chance to say, hey, staff, that's something we want to revisit. Put it on the agenda, prepare a presentation, so that it gives you a way to speak to it timely without having, taking action on it.
Yes, speaking during the citizen comments. Okay.
And when you look at the agenda, it tends with the action items being after the ceremonies, announcements, you run through action items and then you go into the administrative staff reports, which is typically non-action items, citizen issues, which is non-action item, Mayor and Council comments, which is non-action item. So it kind of categorizes them together.
Yeah, I just, I, I think of people sitting here, this isn't one of our longer meetings.
Yeah.
But I think of people sitting here just wanting to make a five-minute or less comment about something and, and sitting here for an hour, hour and a half.
Any other comments? We do not need an executive tonight?
We do not, sir.
So the next motion is?
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We need adjourned, thank you.